Councilman Collins, 23rd, 2019, meeting of the town council. The order, we will observe a moment of reflection, just to kind of think about things that are going on in your lives and those around you. Would you all, Sam, for the pledge, the vice-councilman Henry Showalter, the leader?
A pledge is to the flag of the United States of America, and as a republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are a couple of adjustments to the agenda. Under consent agenda, we are not going to review the April 16th budget committee work session notes, they've not been completed yet. And under discussion by, in action by mayor and town council, we're going to review some invoices from Logo Hood Marketing on Main for some invoices that were overlooked, I think in an accounting, bookkeeping change.
Yes.
So they're separate from any other bills that we will look at tonight. Wayne Nelson is down with flu, so he is not going to present on the engineering capital budget request. I think he is planning, granted, we say the work session on the 7th.
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we got. Any other changes? They okay with you all? Very good. We have no public hearing schedule for tonight, is that correct? Very good. Under consent agenda, council meeting minutes of April the 9th, 2019, the monthly bill list, without the bills that we're going to review for Logo Hood, and the Edgewater Pumping Station Upgrade Professional Service Contract Amendment Number Four Authorization.
May I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
Thank you.
I second.
Got a motion and a second? Any questions? Hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Sachs?
Aye.
There's six introductions and presentations. We have the introduction of some new employees. Max Brown from Public Works, do you got somebody to introduce?
Yes, sir, for me. This is Bobby. This is Bobby Lewis. He came to us with 25 years' experience as a truck driver, some of that was over the road driving. He's been with us for probably about a month now, since March 18th of 2019. Since he's been with us, he's excelled at the duties that we've given to him as a truck driver. As far as his personal life, he has seven children, three of which who still live at home. He's happily married, and in his free time, he enjoys woodworking.
Good deal.
All right, appreciate your time.
Glad to have you, buddy. Welcome aboard. John Carter from Public Works.
I'd like to introduce Isaiah Forster. He started with us in April. He's lived here in the area for 13 years, on the rescue squad. He's been on there for three years, running calls. And he said that he just loved this area, so he decided he wanted to come work for Public Works. We're glad to have him down there. And for his dependence, he's got two pet dogs. And for his hobbies, when he ain't running rescue, he says he likes fishing and bawling.
And he's a good young man. He really is.
Welcome aboard.
That's 20 bucks, young man.
Devin Erickson from Engineering to introduce a new employee.
Amanda's joining us as the administrative clerk in EPI. Amanda comes to us from Kylaski County Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center, where she was administrative assistant and secretary for three years. While in Kylaski County, she completed her associate's degree in administrative support. Amanda has more than 10 years' experience in customer service and really enjoys helping people. She lives in Fair Lawn with her two children and fiance. She's looking forward to a great career with the town of Christiansburg and the new experiences and growth it'll bring, and we're excited to have her on board.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
You got us. We'd like to welcome Oliver, new employee. Next, we have Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce Executive Director Dr. Sharon Scott to present on the chamber's 2019 program of work.
Did you tell me that, Sam?
That's it?
Yeah?
Oh, I will.
Okay. I only have 16 pages, Sam, you're a good chick. First of all, my name is Sharon Scott. I serve as your executive director of your Chamber of Commerce, which is currently located at 1520 North Franklin Street in Christiansburg, but will soon be moving to 210 Laurel Drive in Christiansburg. We're very excited about that. Thank you for allowing me to speak before you this evening about the exciting year that your chamber has planned. But before I do this, I want to congratulate councilmember Sachs on her recent recognition and nomination as a community builder at the Women's Leadership Conference. I also want to thank Melissa for her help with the conference. So thank you very much, and congratulations. Your chamber is the most active chamber in southwest Virginia. We're innovative, and we provide programming to support our members. We believe by supporting our local members, we're developing a strong local economy, and in that environment, people will want to live here and stay here, like Isaiah, that just left. We want to keep those young guys here. In the last 10 years, your Chamber of Commerce has reduced our debt by 84 percent. You may remember a gentleman by the, I use that term loosely, by the name of Shane Adams. But we've reduced that debt by 84 percent, and we've increased our assets by 143 percent. I provided a copy of our strategic direction and our 2019 program of work for you. We have a staff of four employees, and I host volunteers that actively support programming as the strategic direction of your chamber. The town of Christiansburg is a governmental member of the chamber, and you also choose to place an ad in our chamber magazine that we affectionately call the Annual Manual. This publication currently is at the printer, it should be back very, very soon. The publication is distributed to new hires throughout our community. It can be found in government buildings, physicians' offices, banks, other service-driven lobbies, and Kroger and Food Lion. We also appreciate your engagement in our program of work and the efforts of Mayor Barber to participate in the open portion of our board meetings. Andrew Warren, Assistant Town Manager, serves on one of our committees, and this engagement ensures that we're working in tandem with the goals and the directions that are progressive for our community. The chamber receives several calls in the last 18 months regarding microbreweries, and we made sure that Andrew had those introductions. So we're very excited to see what happens in the future. Did you know that 47 percent of our members are in Christiansburg zip codes? That's pretty impressive. Our board is comprised of business leaders from Christiansburg, Blacksburg, and Radford. Our structure is much like yours. I work for a board chair and a board of directors. It's not my chamber, it is the members' chamber. Our program of work is determined by the members and the board of directors, and our committees are chaired by our board members and active members. You'll find our mission and vision on page one of that document. You will find the strategic direction, it is found on page two. Our committee structure is found on page three through seven. You'll find internal committees, those are our officers, and they serve on committees such as the executive committee, finance, and business awards. External committees focus on the execution of the annual objectives. I'm going to share quickly, Councilwoman Bishop, very quickly, an initiative from each of our external committees. We're really excited about our Business Resource Committee, which focuses on our buy-local initiative. Our goal is to increase buying, not shopping, but buying, by 10 percent over the next 24 months. Our launch will occur in Q3 of 2019. For example, did you know if sales tax increased, if we not increased the amount, but if we shopped more locally, by 10 percent, Montgomery County Public Schools could hire 13 to 17 new teachers if the school board, excuse me, if the board of supervisors chose to use those funds in that manner? Or they could purchase 3/4 of a fully-equipped fire truck. The wish list continues, but it's all about us keeping that money local. Shop Business, Shop Small Saturday simply is not enough. We have to engage our residents and our businesses to support local business. This is, has been a very challenging initiative. It's like trying to wrap your hands around Jell-O. But we're moving forward. Our Talent and Education Committee is pleased to reopen our best places to work in Montgomery County, Christiansburg, and Blacksburg. Our goal is to generate awareness of the great businesses that we have right here in this community, again, so we're not losing young people like Isaiah, or Melissa, or Andrew. We want them here. We want to educate our high school graduates to stay here and work. We would like to attract more of the talent from Virginia Tech. Last year, over 100 businesses were involved, and we awarded certificates and plaques to 15 of our businesses for best practices. Again, it's about growing the community and learning the bright spots from each other and what we can replicate. The work with our legislative committee, we're certainly going to support such work as lowering the threshold for our local businesses to do business with Virginia Tech if they have a spouse employed by Virginia Tech. That's absolutely ludicrous if we have someone who owns a small business, and their spouse is employed by the university and makes over, I believe the amount is something like $300 or $500. Currently, that level that you could make as a business owner is $500 annually. In a community our size, that's crazy. So what we've done is we've worked with the office in Richmond. We have looked at the statute, and we are in the process now of educating our members. That threshold has been, can be raised to $25,000, and that's what we'll be working with our members on over the next three weeks. Our Infrastructure Committee will continue to support transportation because that continues to be an issue in our community. We're also working on accessible broadband to support those who currently live here and work here. I've shared only one program or initiative that supports our program of work. There are other programs and worthwhile initiatives there for you to learn about. Please take the time to read it. Please reach out if you have any questions. We're here to serve the local business community. Thank you for your time tonight and your service to our community. Do you have any questions?
I'll ask one brief question.
Please.
Sharon, the, could you, I don't understand this threshold with a tech, or spouse, or...
Absolutely.
Just real quickly, I mean, that's...
Sure. What, they view it as a conflict of interest. So let's say Sue was married.
Yeah.
Her husband worked at Virginia Tech. She owns a small business.
Right.
Under that, that piece of legislation, so to speak, Sue could only sell to the university up to $500 annually.
I see.
Now, there's a little bit of a loophole there in that Sue could sell to the foundation, and that money could be funneled back into the university. But in a community our size, that doesn't make any sense.
Okay, I got it. No, I understand.
Does that make sense now?
I understand the connection now, yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Other questions?
I've been following how your, the construction on the new building is coming along. It looks like you guys are almost ready. Have you had a move-in date?
We do. I believe Grace was going to send out a save-the-date to all of you. We will have our grand opening on June 26th, I believe. Don't quote me on that. But we will move in around the 10th of May. So we want to give a little lead time there, just in case, you know, the lights don't work. But it's very exciting. And that was a goal of the chamber many years ago, as a matter of fact, back in 2002, when they first merged. And we're excited that it's right there in the middle.
So you all own that building?
It is a lease-to-own, so it is our intent in 10 years to be well on our way to owning the building.
Thank you, Sharon. I saw Sue sitting there. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Next, we have Montgomery Museum of Art and History Executive Director Sue Farah to provide an update on museum activities.
Well, it's always been not my desire to follow Sharon Scott, but here I am. I'm Sue Farah, and I am director of the Montgomery Museum, and it's my pleasure to be here and give you all an update of the activities at the museum this year. Most of all, I want to thank you again, as I always do, for your support, which is so vital to the ongoing success of the museum. First of all, our garden is managed by Master Gardens at Virginia Tech, and it's become an ecosystem. It's very, right now, it's not, but soon. And Beth has made it a little ecosystem where insects are pollinators, and it's serving itself. It's kind of a neat little project. And she's developed a lower garden, so there are native plants, and it's all native plants. We also became a Monarch Waystation this year, and were certified by a national organization called Monarch Watch, which means that in late July and August, you should come. It's really beautiful, and you're surrounded by Monarch butterflies. We have a new bench installed, which was a gift from the Montgomery County retired educators, who received a large amount of money from Penny Ireland, who was a teacher here. And they gave us quite a nice gift, and the bench is in honor, memory of Penny Ireland, and it's really, really beautiful. It was made by twists and turns and rhonoaks, so you probably know it will never go anywhere. You couldn't begin to move it, but come look, it's really nice. Our current history exhibit is called Spirit of Progress, and it brings to light events and activities of Christiansburg in the 20s and 30s. Now, there were no flappers in Christiansburg in the 20s and 30s, so that's not what you'll see, but we do have one picture of a very cute little sassy girl trying to be one. But this was given, this was sponsored by a very generous donation from the Downtown Christiansburg, Inc. Rotating art exhibits bring a wide variety of talents to our galleries, and we have, right now, we have one of the two student exhibits, this is Christiansburg High School. Well worth your time to come look at what these young people do. They're quite talented, and they designed the show and hang it, and they've done, as always, a really nice job. We have five other exhibits featuring artists of the region, whose work rotates around the area also. All winter, we had an outdoor exhibit called Windows on NRV. Artists painted their version of New River Valley on windows. They were installed, they're tall, they just left the other day. They didn't weather real well, all of them, but it's been a wonderful exhibit for us and a great addition to the outside of the building. We currently sponsor, maintain five off-site galleries, which are now called museum community galleries, and Great Road on Main has established a permanent one there. New partnerships have been established this year with Christiansburg Institute, Downtown Christiansburg, Inc., and Lifelong Learning Institute. We continue to partner with Great Road on Main, the town, the county, Office of Tourism, local churches, Christiansburg Kiwanis Club, Virginia Tech, and Radford University, and RSPP. Working with the town of Christiansburg, the museum offered walking tours last summer, leaving from the farmer's market, which will be repeated again, with a nice view of downtown Christiansburg. There were two pop-up exhibits during the farmer's market, and I suppose we will be doing something like that again this year. A community conversation called Back and Forth was started, and didn't end, but it kind of went on halt, so we will be reviving that again this fall with hopefully a talk on railroads. Fundraising events included Heritage Day, Cruise in Christiansburg, Mountains of Music Homecoming, Hearts on Main, an art talk by Scott Crawford, Give Big Day, which actually is coming tomorrow. We'd love to see you over there. And our annual campaign, an art class, memberships, donations, and gift shop sales. We also, this year, established a used book sale, which was pretty huge in terms of books, it's a lot of labor, and we made $2,200, which is a nice amount for our museum to make, and that will summon you repeatedly. We will be working this year with the Feastable, which is the food pot of Mountains of Music, which will be held at Sinclair on June 11th, and that will be our Mountains of Music project this year. We have big news. We are in the early stages of planning, developing a building expansion. We looked around Christiansburg, we're bursting at the seams with people, with stuff, with things, with wonderful artifacts and everything. And we looked at several places in town, and realizing that the cost would be huge to make them okay for a museum, we decided that since we own our property, it is paid for, it was very practical to stay there and add to our building. So you will hear more as we go along, but that's all that we are right now. We're just, we're just talking about it. A few facts you might be interested in. Our staff increased this year by the addition of one more, part-time. There are three of us now, and among the three of us, we equaled at one and a half full-time people. We continue assisting many researchers in their search for family information and genealogy. We have probably a request at least once a week. Over 165 volunteers work with the museum every year. The museum hosted 23 visitors from other states, visitors from 23 other states, and from three other countries in this past year. You may have noticed, the last time I was here, I left a brochure because I thought that I was doing this last time, and it was a very full meeting, so we abandoned it then. But we have adopted a new logo, rebranded, and so we have a new kind of clean look, a little newer look. And we are doing business now as the Montgomery Museum of Art and History. We have not let Uncle Louie go, but we're not using the name, and it's not this extremely long name anymore. We're very pleased with all of that. This has been a very good year for the museum. The addition of five high-energy, brand-new board members has brought many new possibilities to us for activities and new programs, and we're really looking forward to even better 2019. Thank you for letting me be here and to let you know what we're doing, and certainly we'll entertain any questions. We do have an event that's moving downtown, and you may have questions about that.
I would say you always have your act together, and I know a couple of your board members have been coming on and seeing the expansion of your fundraisers, so...
Well, we have very different talents, great skill sets on our board now, and new and younger people, just always nice, and so we're very active, we're cooking.
You are, and you always have your act together, and we appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate that. Now, tomorrow is Give Big Day, and we are hosting at the museum a reception, 4:30 to 7:30, and we would love to have you come. It will hopefully be inside, and we have live music, and so we're looking forward to that.
What size expansion were you looking at for your building?
What size?
Yes, ma'am.
We're looking at 1,000 foot footprint, but probably 3,000 feet.
Okay.
It's going back.
Going back, just, is it first floor only, or two floors?
Three.
Three floors?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's what our hope is, but if we have a simple footprint, we can do more with the inside.
Okay.
And we are way, way far away. I hope I'm living when it happens. My goal.
Well, we do too, Sue.
And we got the same opinion.
Thank you.
Before we go any further, I wanted to recognize Jamie Bond, who's the Montgomery County School Board. Welcome.
Thank you.
Are you part of the liaison rotation, or...
Yeah.
That's good. We appreciate that. Citizens comments, do we, anyone here?
Why I love my hometown. We moved to Christiansburg last May because of our sons and their families and our retirement. We've had to make a lot of changes, some necessary, and some out of our desire to become a part of our new community. In every contact we have made with several different departments in town, including Public Works, Administration in Town Hall, Police Department, Rec Center, and Town Council, we have received friendly, courteous, and professional treatment. We feel welcome. One of our first missions was to sign up for the Clean Neighborhood Program, and Charlton McCoy at the Rec Center made that happen. Our dog is a certified therapy dog, and we were eager to get him busy. Good Samaritan Hospice in Christiansburg made that easy, and we have visits set up on Tuesdays with several different assisted-living facilities in town and in the area. Our new church has welcomed us and made us feel a part of the family. Our location is great. We are in a nice neighborhood on the edge of town, close to shopping, health care, the Huckleberry Trail, where we met Steve Hubbard participating in the Huckleberry Hustle, and our families, but also close enough to the countryside that I can walk the dog along rolling hills and pastures and views of mountains. Our neighbor Brad Stipes struck up a conversation with me while I was walking the dog early one morning before I knew he was a council member, just being a friendly neighbor. We frequently see Mayor Barber around town, and he's also very friendly. We've attended several council meetings and appreciate how they work together for the betterment of the town. Even though there are occasionally differences of opinion, any friction there might be is handled civilly. Sandy and I have lived here for less than a year, but we intend to stay for a while, so we consider Christiansburg to be our hometown. Now, this was written a month ago. By the way, we will celebrate our 50th anniversary this Friday, March 15. We still miss many friends and relatives from the area. We lived for 60-plus years, but also feel we are in a good place. And that's it.
That's great.
A very good friend of mine told me, a guy who used to buy and sell houses, that when you move, you have like a one-year honeymoon period. Our honeymoon is going to be up on May 10th, and then I might have some other things to say.
It'll get better, Paul. It'll get better, better. We have received that, but you getting up to read it is much better than reading it. It's great. Thank you very much.
Sharon, you got Paul's information.
I might add, he picked out me because I was the very last runner last year in the Huckleberry Hustle, and I see Effley is here today, and Effley told me next year for me to start out a half hour before, something I won't be so slow.
Well, Steve, if I had been running, you wouldn't have been last.
We appreciate that, though, seriously. Appreciate it.
Anyone else to address council?
Madam, may I come here?
Certainly.
Jamie Bond is here. Ms. Bond, is there anything you'd like to bring, updates on anything, or, I mean, it's nice to have you, and you're our...
Thank you. I hated that I missed the meeting that you might have got, the demonstration, or when Mr. Tuck had come and shared... Mr. Tucker had come and shared with you some different things, but, you know, if anyone has any questions about what we feel about how we're doing things, please let me know, because it's kind of a different viewpoint. So, but, no, not yet.
Thank you. I'm sorry. No, you're fine. Anyone else?
And we know that you...
Hearing, hearing no one else, seeing no one else, we'll move on to our committee reports.
Right.
Okay, for wastewater recycle, I recently visited the Montgomery Regional Solid Waste Authority's building. They have this amazing new compactor, so if you get a chance, go out there and ask them to see it. It's pretty impressive. But for central business, we have a meeting tomorrow. We plan to discuss the farmer's market and art installments, and a few other things that we've had on our list of things to do and take care of. So please feel free to come and join the meeting. It's at noon here in the conference room.
Thank you. Ms. Tucker?
You know that the Aquatic Center is going to have their yard sale this, on the, on the 4th, and I think there's still some slots open that you wanted to, you know, have, have a slot there at the, at the yard sale. I believe it goes from 7 to 12. And I wanted to add just one other thing here. I was at the Aquatic Center today, and just by chance, and, you know, all second graders in Montgomery County and Radford have the three opportunities to go to the pool, half hours for lessons, and a half hours for safety, and a half hour to play. And I just noticed there was one little kid there, and the kid would not get in the water. He just was not going to get in the water. So his teacher was talking to him, and the swimming instructor was talking to him, and then right there, after about 20 minutes, he got in, and you could just see how he enjoyed it. And my point here is, what, what an asset right there that we're doing there, with this kid, in this particular case, you know, that he is not, you know, maybe not afraid of water like he was before, and more comfortable with it, and that, that second grade program is just so good.
Thank you. Mr. Stipes?
The Montgomery, Virginia Tech Montgomery Regional Executive Air Force, excuse me, we have a, I'm on the construction committee there, just to keep council up to date with that. The, there's a, we're in phase three of the expansion, and due to, believe it or not, due to weather last year, construction is behind. It was supposed to be wrapped up this fall, but it'll probably be, it'll probably be summer of 2020 next year. Just keep everyone posted, it was supposed to be fall, but since we're part owners of that, I'm just keeping you up to date with that.
Mr. Schewalter?
We didn't have a meeting this week, but wastewater and sewer and solid stormwater, we didn't meet, as you all saw by email, because a lot of the agenda items had already been settled by council. The privatization of garbage, council basically tabled or declined that, and really, the only other item that was on there that we, we could have done any type of referral to was a recommendation by staff to get rid of the high school recycling bin, which, if we all read the paper, that there was a teacher who sort of pushed back, which it's fair. So Randy and the mayor actually made that decision to leave that up there, so that bin will remain at Christiansburg High School, and there really wasn't no use for us to meet and make a recommendation on that. That's it.
Mr. Bishop?
I'm, I'm...
Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir. The P P E A committee is going to meet on the 25th this week, and it'll be the final time we meet to determine who we think will be the best contractor for a park, if we do a park, and then we'll make a presentation to the council on the 30th. Okay? Planning committee didn't meet this past week, and I'm interested in knowing when we change the co, you know, the, like, is it, oh, cars? Where is that at right now? Where is that standing?
Should, did we adopt that as code?
Yes.
Yes. Have we sent it letters and stuff? Is it on the go already, or, I mean?
Yes, I mean, I will go with, well, create it in the morning.
Okay.
Get it updated.
Yes, yes. If you'd just let, I don't know, I appreciate that. And the Rec Committee has an announcement tonight, which is going to be upcoming here, and we're all happy about this announcement, too, so. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Here, you got a thing on the 25th, that's at 5:30?
That's right, yes, sir.
Okay, other discussion and action by mayor and council. We have an appointment. Brad, I'm going to let you introduce your appointee to the Rec Commission.
Okay. Mayor, members of council, it's a great honor to be here tonight. I'd like to introduce Catherine Meadows. Many of you might know Catherine. If you don't, Catherine's been a teacher in the Christiansburg system for, for 20 years. She's been a part of Parks and Recreation within our community for over 16, with activities with her as well as her family. She's definitely been an active member within the community, and she's just ready to serve our community in another, another aspect, and to help Christiansburg be a better place through recreational opportunities. And our Parks and Recreation Commission unanimously recommended Ms. Meadows for our final vacancy that was vacated by Rich Polikoff, and so we're just here tonight to recommend her to you all and introduce her.
It's great to see you, and we're awfully happy to have you on the Rec Committee, too.
Is that the form of the motion?
Yeah, please. I shall move.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Hi.
Councilman Collins?
Hi.
Councilwoman Hubbard?
Hi.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Schewalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's six of them. Thank you very much. Catherine, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We'll look for big things from you.
Thank you all.
The budget amendment for 2018, 2019, Mr. Longfield, you got that one? Or Mr. Tweedy, have you got that one?
That's bad. I think it's pretty straightforward. There are four different items spelled out on here. The first item is just a reallocation from the general fund to wastewater treatment plant, build a washout station for cleaning out the sewer back truck. The second item is actually two items. For the Aquatic Center, we've had four coils go in the PAC units that have to be replaced that was not budgeted or counted on, and some socked-up replacement, and a few other major repairs. So they're looking for an increase in a reallocation of some funds. Huckleberry Trail, this is the 2D repair to complete that trail and to fix the portion of the trail that wasn't built properly. We are looking to recover those funds from the bonding company and whatnot down the road, but at this point, we just would like to get the trail done, and we need to have an appropriation of funds to do so. The last item is to reallocate some funds within the budget of rescue for the remodeling to complete, and to use $28,000 of rescue donation funds to do the furnishings for the rescue center as well, renovations, and those are from their donated funds that they're asking for. And that's, that's the summary of that.
Now, when I asked about that, the 24,000, I was told that's coming from revenue recovery?
The 24,000 is really, yeah, that's in revenue recovery, and it's just reallocating some dollars in line items.
Okay, but that, is that for furniture, or is that for emergency services?
It's for the renovation, for some of the furnishings. Now, it's not a lot, but most of the furnishings is, is in the 28,000.
Okay, because this is part of our compassionate billing, correct?
Yes.
Now, I read the ordinance, and it said that this was, those funds, and I remember I was part of council when we did that, were to only be used for emergency services. Should we switch that, that 24,000 over from the general fund and not use those emergency services funds, since they're supposed to be used for strictly emergency services, not for furniture or improvements to the station?
I think you could say that capital and furniture for the rescue is emergency services purposes.
When I was on council, you know, I think we even discussed that with furniture and things of that nature. That being funded from the general fund, not from that revenue recovery. Revenue recovery would be for resuscitation machines, equipment, even medical training.
I think we can use...
And salaries as well.
Okay.
If that's the case, then can we get a clear answer on that and vote later?
Well, this is the public hearing tonight.
I mean, it seems like if, if the fund is set up...
The whole rest of the renovation was funded from the emergency, from revenue recovery.
Okay. It shouldn't have, in my opinion, that should, that's not where we agreed the money would come from, because renovations would have been done whether or not we had the revenue recovery funds or not. And I remember, I was on council, Mr. Stipes you were, Mr. Hubbard you were, I'm not sure if Sam were, and Mike you were, but I remember we, we spent some time making sure that the revenue recovery or the compassionate billing funds are, are not to subsidize what's already there, like for improvements and general funds.
I think it's a good point, and having not thought about it a whole lot, I certainly, I certainly get that. I would also say that we still have primarily volunteer organization, and keeping our facilities attractive and functional could, could, you know, I think that could relate to the use of those funds, and sometimes, as we've heard, and this is, I don't mean to offend anybody, but sometimes it can be tempting to spend money for the sake of spending it because it's there, and maybe get some things that's a little too fluffy, maybe, and I hope I'm not quoted on that too much, but I mean, I think, I think the, I'm not taking exception with you, but I'm saying, I think that keeping our facilities attractive for our volunteers and their use for the public as well is part of, you know, making sure that we have responsive service and so forth, but...
I'm not disagreeing with that, Mr. Stipes, but I do know that what our biggest concern was, that those recovery funds would start to be used...
I get it.
...to subsidize everything else, besides training, besides vehicles, besides machines.
It's a slippery slope.
And we made a point on, on that discussion. We put a lot of time in this.
I'm fine with that.
I'm more concerned that we're starting to use that...
Right.
...how we would use a general fund, and subsidizing that more with age revenue recovery, which that was supposed to use to enhance our lifesaving services.
And decrease response times and so forth, is that...
I don't know about that. That's, that's a better point.
We did originally resist, I guess, we're using, using it for salaries and things now. We did, I guess, kind of resist that at the beginning of the, the use of the fund, was more or less strictly used for...
Same. It's not that the only fund, it should be coming from the general fund. When it comes to the building and for furniture and things like that, that's what we, and we specifically discussed that.
Okay, I agree. That's a better point. I'm going to support that, yeah.
So rather than coming from revenue recovery, you want it to come from the general fund?
Yeah.
Is that the whole amount now, or just this last bit?
I guess we need to find out how much has actually been used for the improved, building improvements and furniture.
It's around $300,000.
How much?
Around $300,000.
Okay. That's, to me, that's...
It's building improvements?
Yeah, but that's our general fund. I mean, that, those funds were specifically supposed to be used for emergency services, and we made that clear. We need to go pull those minutes and take a look at it. Mr. Hall was here. When we, when we put that through.
And I'm not trying, I'm not going to be wrong on this at all, but in, and I wasn't on council when y'all decided all that, but in, in my mind, I, I think that is for emergency services. You know, the building, that's a big part of emergency service, you know, what we have and, you know, block, you know, you know, he can go either way with me, but I think it could be for that.
Right, you do understand, you know, this was a slippery, slippery slope, and we approved this?
I understand, but...
Billing citizens or services we're providing?
I understand.
And what we're trying to do is keep from subsidizing the, the general fund.
I understand, I understand.
Okay?
So either way, it's fine.
Those, those, those funds were supposed to be used for lifesaving services. I understand, having a nice place to go park your, your vehicle and having nice furniture, but that was all supposed to be funded from the general fund, still. Just like we did if we didn't have that.
If it was intended, that's how it should be.
It was, and the Virginia Lottery was sold as helping education, but it just was, you know how that goes.
Yeah.
And I think Mr. Schewalter makes a good point. I do remember that discussion, and even though the, the larger expenses out the door, the horse is out of that on this one, I think it's a nice time to make a statement and refocus on that, so I think it's a good point.
So to approve the first three and table the $28,000, so we can put it into budget?
No, $28,000 is a donation fund, so that's a different fund. The 24...
The 24,000?
24.
Is a reallocation within the emergency services fund, but if you want that to come out of general fund, we can just stipulate that that's to come from the general fund.
Without having to table that one?
We could bring it back. It would just be an amendment number three.
I'm still a little concerned that, and Brad, I know you said the horse is already out of the barn, that...
Yeah, $300,000, yeah.
Yeah, that, that, that's not what was intended, and Randy, you were here for that, and I was you as well, so...
I, I don't, I don't mean to contradict, but I...
Firstly, I feel the same, that it was intended for capital, and that's what we've always tried to use it for, although we, we have kind of have gone beyond that with banks, some of the personnel currently. That was discussed with the new positions when we started paying.
I recommend, I'm sorry, I'm going to go ahead and say, there seems to be a lot more thing to talk about here. Maybe we set this aside.
I can see that the furniture is something that could be seen as maybe not capital, even though it's expensive enough to be a capital expense. I definitely get that. The building, I think, is definitely more of a little, like a solid asset, but I guess, to be honest, when we build the emergency services station on Runx Street, I would expect that we've used revenue funds, revenue recovery funds.
If we didn't have the compassionate billing and those revenue recovery, how will we be paying for these improvements?
General fund?
That's right. And that's what, that's why this was such an issue with passing an additional cost off to residents, that we were going to use this as an enhancement for the emergency services. I'm, I'm not disagreeing with anybody coming up with something and say, well, I can see it this way. We all do that on council, but I do remember when we talked about this, in order to put it into place, that we had to justify it.
And who's our, our emergency services liaison? Is it Mr. Bishop?
That'd be me.
Is there one, or is there two of you? Just one?
Two.
Who's the other one?
Councilman Hopper.
Oh, Mr. Hubbard, okay, what do you guys think?
Well, personally, I would like to refresh my memory of what it does say, because I know one time there was a question about paying staff, and I was able to get the agreement, and it did refresh my memory, because I wasn't on council at that time. I feel the same way about this. I'd like to see something written to make sure...
There is a written policy. I'll tell you, the written policy is broad enough that it could be interpreted to be either, because it basically says emergency services. I was able to pull up the, the policy, June 18, 2013, if that, if that suits you. Well, it does seem to be, well, there was a extension enhancement of fire rescue services, meaning hiring additional full part-time personnel, expanding emergency services and dispatch, acquisition of equipment, construction of emergency services facilities, and other items that necessity can be believed to be fire rescue services and recovery areas.
It does say, it does say facilities, but doesn't say furniture.
Furniture isn't a necessity.
I think we can be consistent with their policy by letting, you know...
I'd really say it's all under the current policy. I'll find it somewhat, I think that's fine.
I think one of the big concerns when it was originally passed was that we not supplant what we currently fund from general fund dollars for the rescue department, and take all of those general fund expenditures and throw them in the compassionate billing program.
Basically, we didn't want...
And we've held that solid. I mean, we have... And we've held that solid. I mean, we have not reduced funding in the general fund that we provide to rescue. That has stayed the same. It's increased slightly. But we have not supplant it one with the other. I think that was the biggest issue that everybody was concerned about at the time, was the supplanting of the general fund revenue with emergency services funds revenue and no longer funding it from the general fund.
Why don't you make a motion, Mr. Showalter?
Huh?
I suggest maybe you make a motion.
Well, my motion would be to approve the amended amendment, the budget amendment, but use the special revenue funds from the compassionate billing only for what Andrew mentioned here, and that's for improvements to the station. With the furniture, no. That needs to come from the auxiliary fund or from the general fund.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in the second to pass this thing with restrictions, if close enough? Do you have any comments or questions?
Maybe we're just changing light items around, but that's how they want to do it. That is, I think that's an important part of the department. I would vote to just keep it the way it is right now.
You should vote, huh?
Yeah.
We haven't voted yet.
I know.
I'll call the vote.
Is there a way that we can bring this back to the table to define it, so we know for sure going here forward?
Well, certainly, we'll all email you the policy, and if you'd like to edit it, anyway, council would like to edit the policy. That's fine.
I think it might help us if we define what emergency is, so.
Okay. Any comments? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Okay, I need clarification. What we're going to vote on?
Going to vote on the 28, that extra $28,000, is it coming out of general funds?
The amendment, I made a motion to approve the amendment as it stands, except for the furniture, for the EMS to come out of the general fund, not the special recovery fund.
Special recovery funds will not pay for the construction.
Yeah. I mean, that's been established, so you can use that, the building.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, they're still getting it. It's just coming from
Councilman Collins? Councilman Hopper?
I'm going to vote no, because I don't think we need to move the money around.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
So that is 501. Motion placed. Thanks. We are going to vote on about $3,097 worth of 2017 invoices that I think most likely for marketing on Main, Lego hub, buy marketing on Main, or doing business. As I think through an accounting era, were not submitted and not paid in 2017. That was certainly prior to Ms. Sacks taking her position on council, so they were, they're duly legitimate deals.
Make a motion when we pay the invoices.
I second.
Motion in the second. Mr. Stipes?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's 5001 with an extension. Very good. Okay. Proposed revisions to the town employee handbook. Mr. Wingfield, is this yours? I think you handed us out, you gave us a handout on that.
This was in the packet, although you have, I guess, a revision in front of you, the one revision, if you look on the third page, page 33 of the handbook, the Christiansburg Aquatic Center and Recreation membership, we're just adding that to the personnel handbook also for clarification purposes. Most of these changes are really for clarification purposes, as much as anything. The one, I guess, that I consider a little bit of a policy change that I'll point out to you is the very first item on the sheet, the employee driving records, that we would allow people to drive town vehicles as employees with two years' driving experience rather than three. And that's just to simply help our hiring and availability for drivers.
How much would that hurt the insurance?
I don't think it, with two years' driving experience, I don't think it would really affect on the insurance.
More than on age, I think, I don't know.
Yes. We don't really consider, that's part of the reason we use driving experience, that you just don't, simply don't want to use age.
Okay.
What was that, Mr. Wingfield?
The driving is the very first item.
Top paragraph. It's not highlighted.
Page 12. And the one additional item that we added that was not in the packet is the change on page 33 for the aquatic and recreation membership.
I have one question. And this will be sort of blunt, but for many years, until very recently, leave time was not tracked and not, people didn't have any, I mean, it was pencil and paper by supervisor. Is that correct?
It was.
What is this, what is the situation now?
It's a time clock.
So, so there is an accurate, all this is tracked. I'm getting, seeing three nodding heads. Okay.
This is online time clock, correct?
It accrues their time when they take time long. It subtracts it, adds it at the end of the month if they work online. It's all pretty automated now. And we do, time sheets are reviewed and submitted, everything.
And compensatory time, who's eligible for that?
Basically, non-supervisory employees, non-eligible.
Right.
Otherwise, if you're eligible, you'd be entitled to flex time, hour and a half versus comp time, hour and a half.
The flex time doesn't get for, for upper level positions, supervisors wouldn't cash out on that. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. I'm fine with that. And with that clarification, I'm fine with the revisions I presented.
Form the motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion in the second. Let's get it presented to us.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Six oh. Thank you. Staff reports. Town manager?
Just to point out the upcoming meetings, we have special meetings in regards to the Park PPA, people earlier, and special meeting in regards to budget mixup.
No report.
Mr. Tweedy is the only other staff. Well, no, okay.
Mr. Dimitri's back there.
Good. Okay. Very good. Counsel reports. Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir. I'm good.
Mr. Bishop?
Don't have anything.
Mr. Showalter?
Nothing.
Mr. Stipes?
It's a brief comment. Mr. Jacob Demick put a nice article together that's sort of exciting, because Christiansburg is getting national attention as a pilot for deliveries by drones. So I think it's a great story and sort of exciting, actually, in the Washington Post.
Mr. Hopper? I noticed Mr. Demick's report this morning, and I did notice that there could be a noise issue with these drones. So that's something, I guess, we'll, apparently Australia has a problem with it. So I'm sure that'll all be worked out when the time comes. If any of you on council have, people asking, well, who got contact? What's the, you know, how do I get involved? What, how do I know? I think Brian Hamilton with Economic Development is kind of the go-to person. So that's, I've referred a couple of people down to him. So Mr. Wingfield and I went to Amington this morning and addressed a newly elected council members group. And then after we left, Ms. Tweedy came in and talked to him about financing and budgeting. So we were very well represented, probably 25, 30 people there. So, but it was good. It's, we were encouraged, because VML is finally coming to this end of the state to do some things. So, and I think the indication I got from Michelle Goudy, the executive directors, is they're going to try to do a little bit more centralizing of the stuff. It's, you know, you get these people out in Amington, and they have to go to Virginia Basin, and they're traveling, that's two days' time.
And it says a lot about you guys, that they asked y'all to do it.
Yeah, we were asked to moderate that.
Yeah. That's good stuff.
All righty. Any other business to come for council? If not, we are adjourned.